Uh, the City Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a roll call of the members, please?
Krista Hollup.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Daniel Gravy.
Present.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Susan Wood.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
Ciara McIones.
Here.
And that's everyone.
Thank you. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the order of the agenda. If there are no objections to the agenda presented, it will stand as approved. Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Next order of business will be approval of minutes from our last commission meeting. I would now entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you. Uh, let's vote on the approval of the minutes, please.
Motion approved seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, next order of business will be the public forum. This is where it's general interest public forum. It's now time for any person to speak on any subject that is not on the agenda tonight. Do we have anyone, uh, present?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Nobody.
Okay, thank you. I will now close the public forum and we'll move into our next item on the agenda, which is our general public hearing. Mr. Moore, would you please introduce our first agenda item?
Case number WZ twenty-three oh-nine, a request for approval of rezoning of property location located at one-one-five-seven-one and one-one-five-eight-one West Forty-Fourth Avenue from agricultural one A-one to planned residential development PRD with approval of an outline development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, do we have a staff presentation?
We do.
Thank you.
All right, I'll get started. So my name is Stephanie Stevens. I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Presented case number WZ twenty-three oh-nine, which is a request for approval of a zone change from agricultural one to planned residential development with an outline development plan. I would like to enter into the record, the public, the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The site is located on the north side of West Forty-Fourth Avenue between Hayber Street and Robb Street, and it is made up of two unflatted lots and is approximately three-point-three-three acres in size. It currently contains a seven-hundred-and-sixteen-square-foot single-unit dwelling built in nineteen-twenty-four, a fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-four-square-foot single-unit dwelling built in eighteen-eighty-nine, and multiple accessory structures. It's currently zoned agricultural one, or A-one, and adjacent properties to the north, there is one zoned agricultural one as well, and it contains a single-unit home, and to the west is residential two and residential three with single-unit townhomes and duplexes. And to the south across Forty-Fourth Avenue is zoned residential three, and it is eligible for multi-unit at that site. And to the east is restricted commercial zoning with a commercial use and smaller lot, single-unit residential development, zoned planned residential development. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from agricultural one to planned residential development with an outline development plan for a thirty-nine-unit cohousing development with a common house and shared amenities. The code allows for processing of ODPs and SDPs, the specific development plan or site planning portion of it, concurrently or sequentially, and the applicant has chosen the sequential two-step process. So SDP and subdivision would come at a later date if the ODP is approved. I'll go through the ODP document with you, and then I'll talk about the criteria of review and staff findings. So this is an excerpt of the ODP. It establishes the planned residential development zoning, and it is two sheets included in your staff report. First page is the cover sheet with certification and signature blocks for property owners, planning commission, city council, and mayor. And there's also a character of development statement, list of permitted uses, development standards, and other standard notes. The second page includes the conceptual layout of the property, or a sketch plan, what we call, and it includes access, open space, and lot layout. The ODP is a property-specific zoning document that establishes the underlying development standards, which would run with the land if approved and cannot be changed without going to, going through a subsequent zone change process. The ODP represents a phased approach to development with two distinct planning areas in which the northern portion of the site shown to the left of the screen proposes stricter regulations to ensure sensitivity to adjacent properties. Planning Area One, the southern portion abutting Forty-Fourth Avenue, is to contain the housing, while Planning Area Two, the northern portion, is to contain, um, or to remain more agricultural in nature and open space uses. Two access points are proposed near the east and west borders of the site, leading to a looped perimeter drive that provides vehicular circulation, pedestrian network, fire access, and utility infrastructure. Primary buildings are located inside the looped drive with multi-unit and common house buildings along Forty-Fourth, transitioning to townhomes, duplexes, and carriage houses moving north, and central common open space between the buildings in Planning Area One and Planning Area Two, located north of the looped drive, reserved primarily as open space. Six-foot-tall solid fencing will border the perimeter of the site. Adilities are provided through a combination of the common house, central common green in Planning Area One, as well as Planning Area Two, and overall include an exercise studio, community kitchen, indoor and outdoor dining, a natural pool and pool shed, community gardens, and a garden shed, a bike barn and storage, a maker's shed for woodworking and welding, and a dog run and dog wash. While the site is required to be subdivided, there is no intent to create individual lots for the separate planning areas or buildings. This is a unique cohousing community where residents will have common interest. The development standards generally follow the city's residential three, or R-three, standards, with some standards borrowed from mixed-use neighborhood and agricultural one to create a unique zoning framework. This effect effectively consolidates density closer to Forty-Fourth Avenue, adjacent to the more intense uses. This is offset by transitions in height and stricter standards in Planning Area Two, where adjacent to lower-density residential and agricultural uses. In the spirit of providing a high-quality development through a planned development, the project also proposes onsite parking and circulation, increased open space, onsite detention, and customized architectural and design standards, which otherwise would not apply under standard residential zoning. Go back here. So now I'll walk you through those standards. Allowable uses in Planning Area One include single-unit dwellings, of which can be attached, detached, or carriage house style, along with duplexes, multi-unit residential, and standard residential accessory structures, such as sheds, to match those permitted in base residential zones such as R-three and mixed-use neighborhood. Planning Area Two is proposed to allow residential accessory uses only. No dwelling units would be permitted in this part of the site. Pursuant to city charter, the density limitation on the site is twenty-one dwelling units per acre, resulting in a maximum of sixty-nine units being allowed, where a maximum of only thirty-nine units is proposed. The proposed density is comparable to what would be allowed under the city's R-three zone district, which has a maximum of twelve dwelling units per acre. The units are organized so the highest density and building height is focused along Forty-Fourth Avenue and gradually decreases to complement surrounding neighbors. Parking requirements are proposed to match the city's mixed-use neighborhood district with a minimum of one space per unit or two and a half spaces at maximum. Also in line with mixed-use neighborhood is guest parking is required at the discretion of the director and is planned for as shown on the ODP. Two access points are proposed along Forty-Fourth Avenue, forming the looped perimeter drive that will accommodate onsite circulation, fire access, and utility infrastructure under the drive. And full water quality and detention for the site will be required and is planned to be provided in an underground system along the west side of the site. And the engineer, the engineering division had no concerns based on preliminary drainage analysis that was provided with the ODP, and a full drainage report will be required at time of specific development plan. The development is not anticipated to create negative impacts on traffic operations for surrounding streets, and the analysis of site-generated traffic concluded that the anticipated traffic volumes of the proposed development will be minor with up to twenty trips expected in the peak hour. Landscaping and open space is required at a rate of forty percent, of which fifty percent must be usable and fifty percent landscaped, which exceeds city standard. And just to compare to some of the other zone districts, um, the table on the screen compares the proposed zoning with residential three and mixed-use neighborhood for some of, some of the things that we'll go through just now. And note that the project proposes a three-story limit on the multi-unit, two-story limit on townhomes, duplexes, and carriage houses, and single-story limit on the accessory structures. Proposed maximum building height is thirty-five feet for the multi-unit portion, thirty-two feet for single-unit duplex and carriage houses, and fifteen to twenty-five feet for accessory structures. Maximum building coverage is set to a maximum of sixty percent. Build two is required along Forty-Fourth Avenue in lieu of setbacks, meaning the buildings need to be pushed up to the street, as would be required for any non-single-unit residential development in the arc, based on the architectural and site design manual. Bulk plane also applies in accordance with standard residential zones. In alignment with the required build two, the, the ODP calls for a building-forward design with enhanced street spacing, facades, and entry enhancements. Heights transition from three stories along the south, decreasing to two-story duplexes, townhomes, and carriage houses in the middle, and single-story accessory structures in the rear and east side in keeping with surrounding forms. Articulation and variation will also be required, and standards set forth in the architectural and site design manual will apply. With, we use several criteria to review zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. A full analysis of the criteria for consideration of the zone change are provided in your staff report, but this image is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which provides guidance in terms of land use. The property is shown and is located in the yellow neighborhood area and along a neighborhood commercial corridor. The neighborhood designation encourages improvement of underutilized properties, and the proposed zone changes consistent with the neighborhood designation, including addressing the need for a greater variety along the corridor. Additionally, the Forty-Fourth Avenue subarea plan calls for a variety of housing as a priority west of Kipling along the corridor for which this project complex. And the plan also reiterates the need to have compatible development within established neighborhoods. Envision Wheat Ridge will soon be replaced by the updated comprehensive plan, or the city plan, coming before you later tonight. And while it is not yet adopted, the draft plan will be published by the hearing date, and the future development of the site will occur under the new plan. So staff also evaluated this proposed zone change against the draft city plan. The housing options allowed by the proposed zone change directly support the city plan core values, to be inclusive and the principle of serving a mix of incomes. It also aligns with the desired outcome of peaceful coexistence by thoughtfully applying and calibrating form and use tools based on the features of adjacent properties. For this location, the city plan says that a wide variety of housing types, ranging from single-unit residential up to multi-unit residential adjacent to Forty-Fourth Avenue is appropriate, and the proposed site design responds to all of the form and design recommendations of the city plan. It incorporates build two and setbacks that match those surrounding the site and are increased where adjacent to low-density residential. Bulk plane and form requirements avoid imposition of additional height onto adjacent properties. Appropriate screening and buffering are included, and parking needs are addressed onsite. Finally, the city plan includes an implementation strategy to support housing development to meet community goals, and this includes reviewing the zoning code to allow housing production that supports businesses, specifically calling out Forty-Fourth Avenue as a corridor in need of additional housing. This zone change implements the strategy by providing new housing stock along Forty-Fourth Avenue. As a requirement of the zone change process, a virtual neighborhood meeting was held back in two thousand twenty-two, and three neighbors attended the meeting. Notes from the meeting are included in your staff report. We sent the application on referral to service districts, as well as completed our internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from these agencies. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners and tenants within a one-thousand-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge, or we did not receive any comments on Wheat Ridge speaks. So staff believes the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for a compatible and transitional land use. It complies with the comprehensive plan. It provides opportunity for reinvestment. This area has seen an increasing mix of housing types and densities, as well as additional commercial investment, and the proposed zoning complements this diversity of land uses in the area and helps strengthen residential markets. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request, and Planning Commission will recommend a decision to City Council, who will also review the zoning. And if City, if City Council approves the ODP, the zone change is approved, and the applicant can move forward to specific development and PLAT. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and has a presentation as well, and we're both here for questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, the applicant has a presentation. I think I'm supposed to say name, spell it for the record, and your address.
Want to see if I can set my timer so I don't talk for too long.
Awesome. Thanks, Stephanie.
My name's Brian Bowen, B-R-Y-A-N, B-O-W-E-N. I live in Boulder, Colorado, and I was actually on the City of Boulder's planning board for about eight years myself, so I have a little bit of empathy for all directions of this dialogue we're about to go into. So, uh, thank you guys for being on the board. I know it's, um, it's not all like super fun, um, celebration time. It's a lot of work. Um, so yeah, I'm here to give you guys a presentation on what Blue Columbine is all about. Stephanie's done an amazing job of explaining what the, um, planning and zoning context is, so I'm really going to be talking about the, what is cohousing and also what is the heart of the community, what these people are trying to accomplish. So my office is Catus Collaborative. Uh, we do cohousing projects all around the country, as well as a lot of other things like mixed-use, um, affordable housing, single-family homes, and, uh, commercial work. And Catus includes a bunch of, uh, really great folks, um, with a lot of experience and creativity. And I'm getting used to this whole scripting thing, so this is going to be a little stumbly for me. I'm used to just like winging it. Probably going to make me grow up a little bit, I don't know, so. So we've also pulled together a great, uh, group of consultants. We've got Edgemont Consulting, consulting doing, uh, development assistance. Wonderland Hill Development Company is Jim Leach's company. He was the, uh, sort of godfather of cohousing in the U.S., developed projects like this all over the country. Um, TJ Civil, Jim Allen is over here. Uh, he's a civil engineer on the project, and he's local to Wheat Ridge as well. Studio Campo, um, is the landscape architect, and we also have, uh, Megan and Josh here, who are the future residents and sort of grassroots developers of this project, so they'll probably try to speak to you at some point here. So, uh, Blue Columbine, um, one of the things about cohousing is that, that's unique, is that it's developed by, in large, by the, uh, people who are going to live there in the future. So people who are just regular residents of Wheat Ridge or Denver, Boulder, wherever, come together to say, hey, we want to do a development that's different than what's offered by the development community. We're trying to combat the housing shortage and do something for ourselves, for our families, and for the greater neighborhood. So there really isn't a profit motive. It's more of like, how do we build something and kind of change the world one community at a time? Cohousing is a, a type of intentional community where residents have their own private homes, but they also share in common facilities and engage in regular social, regular social interaction. Cohousing emphasizes community living through shared spaces, collaborative decision-making, and it creates a really strong sense of belonging. Cohousing uses a participatory design process, uh, where the future residents come together to either be the developers or inform the development process, and we do that through a series of workshops. Um, and this accomplishes two main things. One, it allows the design to reflect what the residents, who they are, what they want to be like, and how they want to live. Um, and it also builds community prior to move in. So all these folks have done, uh, decision-making processes and put money on the line and gone through a couple of years of work to get to this point, and, um, they know each other well, and they have, uh, a heightened level of ability to work through difficulties because of that, which is a good, uh, basis for becoming neighbors in the future. So, uh, this is a slide on the sort of general values that show up in cohousing communities, which are, uh, really common values, but they aren't the values that are typically brought through in a development process that's for profit. It's a different, it's a different world, which we do that kind of stuff too, but this is not that. The key features of cohousing are that it's a form of intentional community, um, and at every point in the design process, we as architects are working towards creating opportunities for casual social interaction that are positive and feel healthy while balancing privacy. So you come at your door and you bump into people who you know, you recognize who care about you. Um, and then the other thing is, uh, residents have their own complete private homes, so you have your own kitchen, your own bathrooms, it's like, you know, regular condos, but they open up onto really rich amenities, um, common facilities, including things like guest rooms, places to cook and eat together, libraries, shop spaces, play areas, swimming pools, and all that kind of stuff. The social benefits of cohousing have been really well researched and documented, um, mostly at university levels and grad programs and stuff like that. In many ways, it's just like any other really great neighborhood, where you have a strong level of connection with the people around you, but it's also generally more mutually supportive and a little bit more, uh, intentional in that way, and a little more structured, in its, uh, casualness, um, and safe and pleasant for, for kids and families. And there are about two hundred cohousing communities that have been completed in the U.S. so far. The idea was brought over from Denmark originally in the eighties, um, and they're a lot more forming as we speak. And about nineteen or twenty of those are completed in Colorado, kind of all around the state, with kind of a emphasis on the front range, of course. And there are probably eight or ten forming as we speak, and some of those are just kind of coffee table conversations at this point, and some are really, uh, starting to spend money on land and find places to be. And there's more information available on the Coho U.S. website, Cohousing.org. Um, this is the main sort of clearinghouse of information on cohousing in the country. And, uh, there's a lot of videos and information on there about what is and what isn't cohousing, and to try to kind of help people understand what they're getting into and understand why they would like it. And if you don't want it, then don't do it. So, uh, cohousing is all about bringing people together so they can share life, day-to-day moments, sharing meals, walking out your door, and bumping into somebody you know and care about, whose name you know, and also being able to have agency over your lives and your homes as time goes by. You know, there isn't a third-party HOA. There's no external developer. It's really just us making the decisions. And, uh, sharing meals, breaking bread together. Actually, let me jump back to a different one on here. Yeah, cohousing creates opportunities for spontaneous interactions, as well as celebration of life events and parties. There's a lot of organized things that happen in the context of this sort of overall vibrant neighborhood. And then breaking bread together adds to the quality of life and relationships. Cohouses usually eat together, not everybody, but maybe thirty, fifty, sixty percent of the community, three to five times a week. So if you imagine, you know, you take a turn cooking once or twice a month for your whole community, the rest of the month you come home to a cooked meal that was prepared for you by someone who cares about you and, you know, knows your dietary, yeah, circumstances, um, and preferences, and knows when the food's going to be too hot. Um, so then raising kids in community is also, uh, a really amazing piece of it. Oh, two of these are mine. I lived in Wild Sage Cohousing for eighteen years, and those two are now eighteen and twenty. One's going to art teacher school, um, and the other one's going to Lewis and Clark for, um, psychiatry, I think. We'll see. But they came out all right. And one of the things that you see with kids in, in these kinds of communities is they know all of the adults, and they know everybody in the community, and so have a really strong sense of connection to different adults besides just the one or two parents. Um, and it tends to raise really strong, really strong children. And there's a, a bunch of these, uh, communities have been built around the U.S., um, and, uh, you know, by and large, based on looking at them over time, they, they represent a, a way of living that gives people a sense of belonging and sense of purpose and sense of connection that people like. So in some ways, they're pretty profound, and otherwise, it's like really basic human stuff. Um, so these are a few projects that we, uh, my office has worked on over the years, just to show you that they've come out well and that they exist and that they're, you know, reasonable things to do. And it's not sort of a crazy experiment, um, although each one does develop its own personality, because you kind of take your hands off the wheel, and the people who are going to live there create their own reality. So we've got, uh, Wild Sage up in North Boulder, and that's where, uh, I lived for eighteen years. Silver Sage Cohousing, right across the street, is a seniors cohousing community of sixteen units. Those two together, uh, participate in the City of Boulder's affordability program, so it's included in our housing program. Forty percent of the homes are at eighty percent or below of area median income. Uh, and four of the homes at Wild Sage were built through Habitat for Humanity through a partnership there. So they, they got down like thirty, twenty-five percent of AMI, so really excellent affordability levels. Lions Valley Village is up in Lyons, and it's a sort of pocket neighbor, neighborhood format. Germantown Commons is in Nashville, Tennessee, and has been built inside a tight-knit, um, historic neighborhood. Hartwood Commons is in Tulsa. You know, there isn't a third-party HOA. There's no external developer. It's really just us making the decisions. And sharing meals, breaking bread together. Actually, let me jump back to a different one on here. Yeah, cohousing creates opportunities for spontaneous interactions as well as celebration of life events and parties. There's a lot of organized things that happen in the context of this sort of overall vibrant neighborhood. And then breaking bread together adds to the quality of life and relationships. Cohouses usually eat together, not everybody, maybe 30, 50, 60% of the community, three to five times a week. So if you imagine, you know, you take a turn cooking once or twice a month for your whole community, the rest of the month, you come home to a cooked meal that was prepared for you by someone who cares about you and knows your dietary circumstances and preferences and knows when the food's going to be too hot. So then raising kids in community is also a really amazing piece of it. Oh, two of these are mine. I lived in Wild Sage Cohousing for 18 years, and those two are now 18 and 20. One's going to art teacher school and the other one's going to Lewis and Clark for psychiatry, I think. We'll see. But they came out all right. And one of the things that you see with kids in these kinds of communities is they know all of the adults and they know everybody in the community. And so they have a really strong sense of connection to different adults besides just the one or two parents. And it tends to raise really strong children. And there's a bunch of these communities that have been built around the U.S. And, you know, by and large, based on looking at them over time, they represent a way of living that gives people a sense of belonging and sense of purpose and sense of connection that people like. So in some ways, they're pretty profound. And otherwise, it's like really basic human stuff. So these are a few projects that my office has worked on over the years just to show you that they've come out well and that they exist and that they're, you know, reasonable things to do. And it's not sort of a crazy experiment. Although each one does develop its own personality because you kind of take your hands off the wheel and the people who are going to live there create their own reality. So we've got Wild Sage up in North Boulder. And that's where I lived for 18 years. Silver Sage Cohousing, right across the street, is a seniors cohousing community of 16 units. Those two together participate in the City of Boulder's affordability program. So it's included in their housing program. 40% of the homes are at 80% or below of area median income. And four of the homes at Wild Sage were built through Habitat for Humanity through a partnership there. So they got down to like 30, 25% of AMI. So really excellent affordability levels. Lyons Valley Village is up in Lyons. It's a sort of pocket neighborhood format. Germantown Commons is in Nashville, Tennessee, and has been built inside a tight-knit historic neighborhood. Hartwood Commons is in Tulsa, seniors community. Trias Village is up in Nova Scotia, built on a gravel pit that was adjacent to Old Growth Forest. Cohousing Houston is on the east end of Houston in an area of change, much like 44th, where there's transit corridors being developed, sort of a TOD-style project. And then our non-cohousing projects all benefit from, this is Bozeman Cohousing, and our non-cohousing projects benefit from this kind of thinking as well of like, how do you create buildings that are a machine for creating community interactions? So let's talk quickly about Blue Columbine. Already a little behind. If you guys cut people off, I will not be grumpy, but it would be great to finish. So the way the site plan is organized is the intense part of the development is facing 44th. And north is to the left. It's organized around a common green with utility access north and south along the property lines to provide access for fire department, parking, water utilities, and then tapering basically from a more urban presentation at the front of the property to a more rural presentation at the back. And that was in reflection of some of the desires we heard from neighbors at different touchpoints throughout the process. And this is a diagram from early in the process showing how that was built into it. We're trying to have homes all open up to the common green in the middle so that as people come and go, they bump into each other. And that familiar area that you have as you walk by your neighbor's house all the time creates that kind of connection. And you tend to get to know each other better. And in my own experience, living at Wild Sage, being part of the development process of that, there were people in the forming stage before we had moved in who had gotten to know really well. And if they lived in a different spot in the community, well, I got to know different people because of who I was proximal with in the neighborhood. So that really meant a lot in terms of how things advanced. There's rich common amenities. I won't read you the whole list because that would be even more boring than this. But there's a lot going on there. And the current unit mix is a pretty big diversity of unit types, ranging from like 800 square feet all the way up to almost 2,000, depending on kind of where we end up with a few things on that. And then, you know, our first step into this was being a part of the 44th Street sub-area plan process. We went to a few public meetings on it to find out what staff and you guys were up to. And, you know, we went through the design guidelines. And I actually have to say, like, you know, we worked in a lot of different jurisdictions. And it was great to crack open your design guidelines and have them be so legible and so clear and actually so positive. I felt the outcomes that we got to through that were actually really good. We didn't have to fight with it a whole lot. It made a lot of sense. So the sucking up part of the presentation's over. And we're also trying to provide occupiable surfaces on the front of the street. So there's active street life, right? So entrances face the street, little courtyards face the street, roof decks face the street. And there's also wonderful views out that way, right? So there's a good reason for the occupants to want that as well as the neighborhood. There's a bird's eye view looking to the southeast. And you can see, you know, the more intense development and the multifamily kind of section all the way to the street. And then really, the whole back and left side of that, along the east side, is really one long building. So there's townhomes at the far left end of that. And that turns into flats, and that turns into some more flats. And then that hooks around and creates the common spaces of the main level, or main area. And part of that was actually a reaction to planning and fire department and water department comments. We were sort of pushing that direction. And I think it, you know, something we can tolerate. And it's actually going to be, I think, good for the project, so. Another image of the courtyard. Spaces between the townhomes. Where a great reference for this kind of design work is Ross Chapin's book, Pocket Neighborhoods. He talks about the layers of privacy that are like really beneficial between fronts of houses like this. And we really focus on having like the kitchen sink facing out. So while you're standing there washing veggies, you're looking at like your kids playing on the patio. And then the patios are raised so that you feel safe sitting out there. And they're big enough that you can really furnish them. And then there's little gardens. And then beyond, that's another layer of planting. So, you know, it's, we're kind of trying to set up the ability for, you know, Josh to walk by and for me to basically be like, hey, Josh, and ignore him more than that. Or be like, hey, Josh, come in here and talk to me. I've got a thing I want to talk to you about. So that ability to opt in or out of a social interaction is kind of the key invisible part of this sort of a design work. And that's the whole thing. So thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I will now open the testimony, or the hearing for public testimony. It looks like I have one person in-house signed up to speak tonight. Mr. Blum. Mr. Blum, we, you know, name, spell your last name and your address, please.
Yes, thanks. Hi, my name is Josh, J-O-S-H, Blum, B-L-U-M. I live at 2370 Bel Air Street in Denver, Colorado. And signed up to speak on behalf of the members. I'm a member of Blue Columbine Cohousing, obviously, and have been part of this process since the beginning with my wife, Meg. And I'm really glad, thank you, Stephanie and Brian, for doing such a great job with the whole presentation because I feel like it actually was reinvigorating to me to hear them speak and why we have put ourselves through this process, including six years of trying to get more members and to see this dream become a reality. So I mostly just wanted to say, I think we're interested in being a really good neighbor and being a part of the community. As you heard from Brian, the whole point of cohousing is to be a community. It's basically recreate what is like a small village that you live in a place that is where you support each other and where you have children who can be active and know a lot of different adults. And you can have adults who can look after lots of children and have lots of relationships with people you care about and share meals and those opportunities for spontaneous social interaction that, as we get older and as my wife and I are both now empty nesters with kids out of the house, we realize we don't really need this, you know, relatively big house with multiple bedrooms anymore that we're alone in. We'd really rather be in a community and live in a place where we feel supported and feel stimulated by others, including other viewpoints. So I'm really just here to try to answer questions, if there are any, from the members' side. And want to thank you guys for your time and for your consideration of this project.
Thank you.
One last thing. I'll just say, it's a deeply terrifying experience to go through a development as a non-developer and someone who does not do this for a living and even meetings like this. It's scary. I hope it works out. But I just want to point out what Brian said, which is that those of us who are members, who are part of this, we are really, I apologize, we're not professional developers. We're not doing this for profit. We're doing this as an opportunity to kind of create the community we want to live in. So apologies if we get any of this stuff wrong, but thank you.
Thank you so much. Have nobody else signed up to speak in chambers? Do we have anyone online?
Nobody.
No one online? I will close the public testimony. And I would say we give the next round here is they give the applicant opportunity for rebuttal or wrap-up. But I'm guessing you're okay. Our next question's from the commission. And I'll start to my left, Madam Disney.
First question is, I don't know exactly who to direct this to. Have you acquired all of the community members? Or, yeah, is it a fully settled?
That's a great question. The way we arrange this is we're trying to build the, grow the community from a sort of seed of four to six or eight burning souls all the way up to, really from a development perspective and a cash flow perspective, 80% of the units being pre-sold before we get a construction loan. That's kind of like technical, financial underpinning of it. And they're, you know, half or two-thirds of the way to that level at this moment. And so the community grows as time goes by. What you find is that there are some people like Josh and Meg who can say at the beginning of this, like, I want to do it. I don't care where it is. We're going to find land. That's rare. And so people want to know, where is it? What's the property going to look like? Is it going to look cool? What are the units like? What's it going to cost? And so as that information becomes available, more and more people are able to be drawn to the project. And actually, you know, planning commission support is one of those big hurdles. You know, if they, you know, everybody knows that things get shot down and they're like, well, we'll see if they make it. So this will be a boost.
Second question is for you. I was reading over the notes from the community meeting. And one of the questions that was asked was how many units? And I believe you said, or someone said, 24 to 36. And now we have 39. And it appears that this is the largest development that you have done. But it seems to me, I went and looked at the lot and tried to envision 39 units. And it seems like that's really, really dense. And I don't know if you're aware about this community's sentiments towards high density. So I just want to hear what happened, what changed, why so many? Why does it have to be quite this dense?
Yeah, it's a really good question, actually. You know, in the early phases, we're sort of guessing about some of those numbers and using rule of thumb. Like, well, you know, most of them are 24, 36, somewhere in that range. There are some in Colorado that are up to like 42, 44 cohousing, unit cohousing communities. And we've actually done, you know, more hundreds of unit kind of projects in the affordable housing world. But in cohousing, they do tend to range between, I think the smallest one we've worked on was really 16. And the biggest one was about this size, something in that range. We've got a 40-unit one going on right now up in Snohomish County, Washington. And part of the reason for those numbers is it's just a manageable size of sort of human interaction. So it's really kind of sociologically determined more than anything else. And the reason that we went from, at some point, we had 36 units. And then we added three more to go to 39, really because of finances. We found out we could afford to deliver a few, I'm using kind of developer-y terms here. We could afford to deliver a few more smaller units if we had a few more units. And so in terms of trying to provide housing that was for everybody and more attainable units, that's the reason for that decision. And, you know, the density of this is really like 11 or 12 dwellings per acre. Silver Sage and Wild Sage, those two are 20 dwellings per acre. They're more dense. And then Germantown Commons was 25 units per acre. So there's a lot of them that are more urban and some are actually more like truly urban, like downtown Seattle or downtown Denver kind of projects, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you. Well, I had a question, although Commissioner Disney already asked it. So I think we are okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hollup.
Thank you, Chairman. First question I saw on your website from Catus Collaborative that you guys do sustainable design and net zero. Can you talk more about that for this application?
Yeah, and it really varies project by project and jurisdiction by jurisdiction. The TVE, Trias Village Eco Housing one up in Nova Scotia, is a certified passive house multifamily project. And those are pretty rare. There's not a lot of those in the country. We've been doing passive solar and energy-efficient design since 1995. It's been a really core part of my education, my upbringing. I grew up in a passive solar house in New Mexico. So I'm a big eco nerd about all this sort of stuff. And you could get me talking about this for another five hours. But so what we're shooting for typically these days is, you know, every jurisdiction has got a different set of rules. So we'll be exceeding, I think you guys will be probably 24, 24 IEC by that time. And so we typically exceed the baseline energy performance by quite a bit. And then there's a strong sensitivity in these communities from the user group, from the people who live there, to do low-carbon construction methods. So if we could do something like mass timber or if we could avoid use of concrete or avoid high embodied energy materials, that's kind of the first step in the construction process, using dimensions and design aspects that result in the least amount of waste possible is another big step forward. Sharing walls and being on existing corridors is the smartest thing that we can do as cities to be rationally allocating water and transit and land. As a native New Mexico guy, I would kind of prefer to claw back as much wilderness and natural areas and farmland as I possibly could and really stick with just building on transit corridors in towns. And, but as far as an actual goal for this project, I'm not sure where we're going to land on it. We'll see. But we're capable of going the full gamut.
Thank you. Second question. You had said, you know, mentioned wanting to really come in and be a good neighbor. I'm not sure. Maybe that was Ryan, or Josh or Ryan. I'm not sure who said that. But it occurs to me, looking at this design and the walls, the perimeter walls, it's very insular. So you're bringing in a pre-built community. And so just wondering how you will interact with those neighbors. For example, the common space, I assume, will only be amenities for the residents. Do you have any reaction to that?
Yeah, no, I do. Several strong reactions to that. Part of it is the context around us is impermeable. The projects that, you know, in my fantasy world are the best are places like Wild Sage or Silver Sage where they're bounded by new urbanist street frontages. We have on-street parking, tree lawns, rich front-to-front relationships across the street. But that's not available in this context at all. And there's not any permeability around this property. And some of the things that we heard, maybe not well documented in the neighbor comments, was not a lot of appeal in that. And so our focus is really on the street, 44th. How do we connect with people through there? How do we create a really great street furniture there? Make occupable spaces out there and get to know the neighborhood in that way. The other thing that, you know, these common spaces, they aren't commercial spaces. They're not really used for retail or stuff like that. But they do create a space for gathering. And so what we find is they almost always end up being like the place where the HOA board meets for the much bigger neighborhood. It's where the garden club meets. It's where the neighbors have their birthday parties or wakes or their birth, you know, all the things that happen in life happen in these common houses. And that tends to happen not just in the, for the residents of the community, but for the broader neighborhood as well. So they tend to be kind of a beacon of social connection. So we're doing the very best we can in that urban context.
Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Gray.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Is, I know there's not an affordable housing component to this project, but just in general, does cohousing, as far as like a price point, does it usually stay in the same realm as like per square foot does it usually stay in the same realm as like per square foot on like a new build HOA with some of these same level amenities?
Yeah, and this is something that I spend a lot of time explaining to future residents of co-housing. They sort of feel like since they're doing a beneficial thing, it should automatically be cheaper. But the people who are going to go out there and build the buildings, they don't feel like they're getting paid too much as it is. So it costs what it costs to build. So construction's pretty inflexible on that. We can be smart about how we design it, which we try really hard to do. But the cost of the land, the cost of construction, and the cost of the whole process kind of yields what it yields. And what we see is that like when we're building these budgets, a typical developer might be looking at a profit range of 20, 30, 40% off of a project like this. Here in Wheat Ridge or in Denver, right? It's a normal number. That number doesn't exist in this budget. That number gets spent on richer common amenities and also like taking care of themselves in the way they price things. I also haven't ever had a client group, a group of co-housers, tell me that they want the units to cost more. So they're very motivated to keep things as economically efficient as possible. So they want it to be attainable. And there is always a moment where people who have joined the community realize they can't stick it out. They can't make the next payment, or it's gotten too expensive due to various things, time passing. It's a really big one. Construction volatility is a huge one for us right now. Supply chain issues are frightening. But basically, they have a budget that builds in just enough buffer so that they can, if that money stays at the end of the project, they can return it to themselves and, you know, buy a basketball hoop or something. Thanks. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Quinones.
Because, because I had a similar question. And I still feel a little fuzzy around, around the aspect of affordable. I'm very clear, it's not affordable housing. It's going to be as affordable as possible, right? You did throw a calculation of some percentages whenever you were speaking in your presentation. I'm a little curious if you can dig a little deeper into that.
Yeah, I mean, just the finances behind these projects. So the people who are going to live in these homes need to be able to get mortgages. So the mortgages, mortgage companies look to the appraisers to justify the value of them. So they can't be valued at some sort of weird out-of-market level. They kind of fit into what that industry sees. The, some communities do, since they are setting their own prices, they will float the higher value units higher and artificially depress the lower income units or lower cost units. And that's an internal subsidy measure that I've seen several communities do. And that's just them sort of like, you know, wanting to be inclusive and putting their thumb on the scales a little bit to like affect pricing. There's a lot of internal mechanisms. People will loan each other money or have internal soft seconds to make things more approachable to people. But yeah, there is, you know, we did like Wild Sage and Silver Sage and some others. It's pretty rare to find a jurisdiction that has like a really robust inclusionary housing program like that. And there are issues with that, too. It's not always that easy. But that, that does sort of create those kinds of more affordable units. So, you know, these units will be really kind of more in the missing middle kind of variety of housing typologies. And it's actually, it's very, like, you know, CHAFA and the Lytech world's pretty allergic to this kind of property. It's not big enough. It's for sale. It doesn't sort of hit their targets in a certain way. So, and that money all tends to go towards 100% affordable projects. We do this as well, but it doesn't really suit these kinds of jobs. So really, they're just focused on, you know, trying to build it in a way that's the most cost-effective as possible so that they themselves can buy it. It's one of the few beautiful places where like their personal incentive is exactly what you want it to be. I mean, they want it to be as affordable as it can be. That's their instruction to me. No one said like make it super expensive and fancy. Hopefully that was a better, a little more color on that question.
Yeah, that did clarify it. But as you were explaining that, I have another question. And as you mentioned CHAFA, right, and we're talking about conventional mortgages. Are you looking at, are there going to be any restrictions around non- owner occupied properties, right? Like, if we're trying to build a community, there will be a concern of this missing middle, people actually trying to use it as an investment property as opposed to be members of the community. Are there any restrictions when it comes to purchasing a property in the community?
You know, that's a really good question. And I think, you know, we've, in the past, it has not been a problem. It's more been that people want to be there and they're willing to, you know, seek it out and they create it for themselves, right? It hasn't really shown up as an investment property source to people, partially because they're like, they're little and they're weird and it's 39 units. And like, you know, they're also kind of not, they're a little bit on the down low. But in places where the housing market's really, really tight, that shifts quite a bit. So there's a whole bunch of these in the Bay Area, right? And so they have had to, in ways that align with like federal and state law, create some boundaries to like owner occupied, you know, status for units. And I'm actually not that familiar with how that works nuts and bolts wise in my personal experience of like 25 years doing this. We haven't really run across that problem much outside of California, where I don't really do any projects. But the, we've had, I think, one, one instance of that between Wild Sage and Silver Sage in 20 years. So it's manageable. And I think there's also a presumption in some ways, when you're looking at projects like this, that, you know, renters are somehow problematic. But that's actually, that perception is really dissipating, I think, quite a bit. So some of the communities really welcome like, okay, cool, there's going to be a rental unit in our community. That's great. We'll welcome them, too. So, especially since 2/3 of Americans can't afford to buy a house at all. So, got to open your arms.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood.
I too appreciate the presentation tonight. And I really have appreciated learning about co-housing because it's something I don't know a lot about. And it seems to me, especially as the questions have been answered, that it's something that's really very innovative and it's really sort of flexible. There's a number of different ways of looking at it. One question that came to mind for me, and it's not the subject of what we're doing tonight, but my curiosity has gotten the best of me. In the ODP itself, it says, "General note, future subdivision to create individual lots shall require ODP amendment." So that indicates that there will be some future planning, maybe, not? Is this just to cover all bases?
That's just to cover all bases. I think, I think what Stephanie...
Yeah, I can hop on for that one. It's mostly so that if there is plating of individual lots, we get to see the zoning again. So it'll come back to you if that's the case.
Very good. Again, I just kept trying to understand, okay, it says we're not, there will be, you know, no plating, but then this was here. So now I understand.
She's keeping me honest on that one.
Yeah. And then the next question I have is probably for Stephanie as well. And it has to do with the guest parking. Because I know in some areas, I mean, there will be guests that come to visit. And so, and I know guest parking is shown on the plan itself. But you said that's left up to the director's determination. So I just kind of wondered how that plays out and how it's handled.
Yeah, that's a great question. So it's very similar to how we treat townhome developments in the mixed-use neighborhood zone district, where, you know, they're so tight on space, but it gives the director that discretion to add guest parking, even though they want to squeeze out every unit they possibly can, right? So the director then ends up requiring kind of an analysis from applicants that says that you need X parking, and then we make them provide that guest parking. So it's not a built-in number, but it is, does give us that opportunity at specific development plan level that we can require more parking than, you know, what the minimum one per unit would be.
Very, very good. Thank you. And I have no further questions.
Thank you. And again, thank you both. Very well thought out, very informative presentation. One question I kind of have is timeline. What, provided this passes, and then our next thing is the SDP, correct Stephanie? And since you don't have a whole lot of these lots like, or filled, how long do you predict this may be still this lot the way it is?
Yeah, that's a great question. It's actually a really pregnant question for the group as well. How quickly can we fill it up? Their ability to like bring in new members is pretty tied to some of these approvals. So as we show momentum, as we show like, oh, it was a planning commission that went to city council, we're going through the SDP, planning commission, city council again, you know, that kind of like momentum. And also the evolution of the design, you know, we'll have more renderings. There's a fly-through on the website right now. Some of that stuff will get like more appealing. And as the group grows, the difference, different personalities that are in there appeal to different personalities, if that makes sense. You start to attract more and more people as it kind of snowballs and as the credibility builds. It's kind of hard to say, hey, you guys should buy a unit. It's going to be $700,000 for whatever it is, and you can have it in four years. You know, that's like a little bit of a hard sell. So as it gets more imminent, they sell faster. So the timeline for real is we plan to submit the SDP drawings as soon as we possibly can after city council meeting, and which is August 25th, maybe, or maybe it isn't. And the, so we would try to submit SDP. And Jim, right now, the civil engineer is like, ah, Brian's overpromising. Yeah, he's thinking it through, because the pressure's really on him for that section. And, you know, we'd expect several rounds. And we hear from staff that that could be, she's promised two weeks. Just kidding. It's six to nine months, maybe. So if we can stack that behind this process and then go to building permitting, you know, we could be breaking ground next summer optimistically. But it kind of does depend on the ability to sell units. And what I'm seeing with this project and with others is it kind of once you get to a certain level, it really does expand rapidly. There's a lot of people in the front range, you need a place to live, and they're looking for something that's not so isolated, not so, you know, poor in the way it like lives. They want something very livable and connected. And, you know, I think with the pandemic and with sort of isolation epidemic that's happening in the country, people are finding this kind of community more and more appealing. So I think, I feel like it looks rosy.
Thank you. I have no more questions. If nobody else does, we appreciate the presentation. I'll now close the public hearing and entertain a motion, Commissioner Moore.
I move to recommend approval of, apologies. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ 2309, a request for approval of a zone change from agricultural 1A1 to planned residential development PRD with an outline development plan, ODP, for a 39-unit co-housing community with a common house and shared amenities located at 11571 and 11581 West 44th Avenue for the following reasons. The proposed zone change will promote public health, safety, and welfare of the community and does not result in adverse effect of the surrounding area. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's adopted plans. The proposed zoning density and land use are consistent with the intent of a planned development, compatible with the surrounding land uses, and will result in high-quality development. The infrastructure in the area can support the development. The criteria used to evaluate a zone change support the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Motion and seconded. Do we have any discussion?
I have a comment. I am assuming some of the folks out in the chamber are people who live in the neighborhood. Am I correct on that? And I understand that you may have some anxiety about this. And I empathize with that. I went and looked at the property, like I said, and tried to envision all of those. And then seeing the conceptual drawings, it is a huge difference from what else is in the neighborhood. And as I've been listening to the questions and the presentation and thinking about what I saw the other day, sadly, we live in a big city. It's not like it was when I moved to Wheat Ridge 30 years ago. And I loved Wheat Ridge for the charm and the small-town feel. I grew up in a small town in western Kansas, and Wheat Ridge reminds me a lot of that. And one of the hardest things for me, sitting on the dais, is voting for something like this that makes perfect sense. It's a really cool concept. But knowing how it's going to impact you folks who have lived in that neighborhood probably longer than I've been alive and like that rural feel that you've grown accustomed to. And there will be more cars. There will be noise. And sadly, that's going by the wayside because unfortunately, a lot of people want to live in Colorado. I cannot believe on social media how many people I see excited about moving to Colorado. And I go, oh, my God, there's more people coming. But I am, if there's any way to try and make these buildings look a little more like the casual Wheat Ridge that we have come to know and love, I think it would blend in with the area a lot better. I think I like more modern design, and I think that's really cool. But man, is it a different look and feel from what exists out there. And that is our last bastion of old Wheat Ridge. So I'm in favor of it, but I would like to give the caveat to the developer to try and come up with a design that maybe isn't so ultra-modern or something that might blend in more aesthetically with the community.
Discussion, Mr. Moore?
None at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Hallup.
Thank you, Commissioner Disney. Couldn't say it better. I would just commend the staff for putting this through the lens of both the old and the new, knowing that we're headed in that direction. I do think that it supports the vision that is outlined in the new city plan. And so I'll be voting for it. I do hope that the community and the developer will think about those sustainability goals as well. Sounds like you have the credentials to do some really creative things with the sustainability. And I think that will just augment the nature of this moving from agricultural 1 to residential as well. So thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the comments from my fellow commissioners. You know, I, I look forward to supporting this project. I, it does, just like all of us, it does, you know, there's a little bit of heartbreak when you see a 1889 house, you know, that holds more history in its walls than this, you know, much else in this entire region. And, you know, when agricultural land as zoned, not really as being used per se, but, you know, that concept when it's being moved to a higher denser residentially, I mean, it is challenging. I'm someone who has operated a commercial vegetable operation in Wheat Ridge and, you know, was kind of in, doing a lot in urban agriculture and very passionate about, you know, how those opportunities are just so nonexistent. You know, but I will say that, I mean, this has been a really educational experience, learning about co-housing. I think, as was indicated during the presentation, that there is a tremendous benefit that I think is on the soft side in terms of the social connection. You know, finding community and the built environment to foster that can do a tremendous amount of good for people's well-being. You know, I think that the fact that this has so many amenities, while there's a little bit of a concern about Commissioner Hallup's question about it being a little insular. I think that, you know, in Wheat Ridge, you have a community that saw very little development for a long period of time. And while there was a lot of downside to that, one upside is that a lot of our amenities were not overcrowded. Trails, pools, this kind of thing. And with the level of growth that we've seen recently, I do think there is a concern among many in the community that, you know, these shared amenities are becoming more crowded. And I think that this design, you know, as one component of it alleviates some of that by kind of bringing its own pieces to the table. And I think that it's a really, you know, it's a really interesting concept. And I think it's very forward-looking. And I think it checks a lot of boxes on what, the type of innovation that, you know, our community and many others will need in the future. But lastly, I will say I really did appreciate the comments from the applicant about the, you know, his interaction and experience with the sub-area plan and with city staff. And it's always really good to hear and what we perceive to be seeing that Wheat Ridge has, you know, staff that is highly competent and really looking ahead in a responsible way. So I really appreciated the presentation, and I look forward to voting yes tonight.
Commissioner Quinones.
I have no further comments. I think everybody's already captured it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood.
I just wanted to echo a little bit the commissioner's comments that have been made already. I do support this. It's a great idea. And I think it's something that has a place and is very much needed. And particularly in this time when we have a housing shortage and definitely a shortage of affordable or attainable housing, because by virtue of the project and the size itself, I think that they will be more affordable or more attainable units, even without a strict requirement for affordable housing. So I think it's something that's very much needed. And I think that, you know, again, I really do appreciate Commissioner Disney's comments because Wheat Ridge, I've been here 30 years, too, and I've seen the changes well. I've seen the changes in my own neighborhood and down the street, and it is the way it is. And while in-migration to the state has slowed a little bit, it's still pretty high. And I think it's really high for Wheat Ridge, which has been a place that people want to come to. So to provide housing for people to come to with an air of sensitivity to those who are already here is a great way to go. But I do support it, and I do appreciate you coming here tonight to tell us about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods. I really don't have much comment. I do, I echo Commissioner Disney. You know, my mom, I grew up in Lakewood in a spot where we had a barn and horses and chickens. And I think mom and dad's spot's like 2/3 of an acre or something like that. And like four or five neighbors of us, they got these long skinny lots with, you know, it's all zoned ag one. And it's hard to see that go away. However, you know, the original land users here had big farms, and those all got subdivided out, and things are the way they are. And, you know, I think we all remember a simpler, better time. But time moves on. And I appreciate you all coming down to the meeting tonight and appreciate the interaction with the community. And I echo Christine. And I echo Christine with, you know, it'd be nice to, you know, take their desires, needs, and wants into consideration when we get to the SDP and our final look of everything. And appreciate you coming down and giving all of the testimony and presentation. With that being said, we have a proper motion and second on the floor and, and a poll of the commission, please.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Again, thank you all for coming out. Appreciate the, the neighborhood showing up, and, and you all appreciate that. That is the end to our public hearings. Next order on the agenda is old business. We have any old business?
No old business.
Well, then we'll move right into new business.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, I want to welcome Ella Stevie. She is our senior neighborhood planner, if I get that right. And she's going to introduce the city plan discussion for this evening.
All right. Thank you for having me. And I'm joined by my colleague Eric Amy on, from CZV, our consultant on Zoom. So I think presentation ready. All right. Thank you for having me. I'm Ella Stevie, and I'm excited to be here at this, after many conversations with you all, at this kind of farther along stage where we can actually have a real product to look at and react to together. So I'm going to talk to you today about the city plan. So first, I'm going to give really brief project overview, just a quick refresher on the process that we've been through so far. Then I'm going to give a little overview of the draft plan, basically like the presentation version of the executive summary. Then, oopsies, then we're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive into implementing the plan and what that is going to look like for this, for this group here tonight. So we're going to talk about rezonings, and we're going to talk about code amendments. Then we're going to wrap up with some next steps. And I'm going to have some pauses in there to stop and hear from you all on each of these, at each of these steps. So let's start with our project overview. As you all know, we've been working on this plan since early 2024. We've had four phases. Oh, man, sorry, I'm having some clicker issues here. Okay, that went, I don't know how that went so far. Okay. How, like halfway through my presentation? Each of these phases has had in-person and line up on, and online opportunities to provide input. And we've also been meeting with our steering committee through this. We also had a group of what we're calling Neighborhood Champions. So that was a hundred community members who signed up to have a bigger role in getting the word out and being involved. So now we are in the review phase of the draft plan. So that includes our discussion tonight, as well as we'll be at city council for a study session next Monday. We had our last steering committee meeting last Tuesday, and the public draft is open until next Tuesday, July twenty-second. So assuming we don't have any big issues to resolve in this review period, we're hoping to be back to start adoption later in August. So hopefully, you've all had a chance to read through that executive summary and familiarize yourself with the draft plans, or at least the parts that are most interesting to you. I know it's a long document, so I'm not expecting anyone to have read it front to back. So I'm going to give a little overview of the structure and high-level content of that plan tonight. And then, as I said, we can do a little deeper dive. So as a reminder, the city plan, as our comprehensive plan, will shape the future of Wheat Ridge over the next fifteen years. It articulates our path forward based on what the city wants to become in the future. So in your review of your plan, I'm guessing that there weren't any big surprises. You've seen most of this content over those last four phases. But it is fun to see it, and sometimes, yeah, exciting and, and sometimes a little scary to see it all come together in a draft. So this plan's organized into three parts. The first one, part one, is welcome to the city plan. So in this first part, we define what a plan needs to do to be successful. It needs to get the big things right, it needs to plan for what is known, and it needs to create a decision-making framework for what is unknown. So part one also looks at where we are today, a few things to note about that. So younger people are moving into Wheat Ridge. So the average age has noticeably decreased in recent years. In that transition, we're also seeing higher incomes. At the same time, though, housing prices are going up in Wheat Ridge, as they are everywhere in the metro area. And they're actually rising faster than incomes. So that means that the historic affordability that Wheat Ridge has enjoyed for much of its history has been eroding. We've also seen an increase in the number of jobs in the city and in the city's sales tax revenue, which provides a substantial portion of the city's budget. So at the same time, the city's been working to modernize in several ways. One of those, one important one, is community engagement. So by creating the community engagement specialist, if you know my colleague Ashley Holland, her role, and actually mine as well, the neighborhood planner role, the city's been able to get a much better understanding of resident sentiment and been able to respond to that sentiment. One thing that we've heard through our previous processes and through the city plan is that Wheat Ridge is ready to invest in our future. So where do we want to go exactly? While people want the city, and we've heard about this in the previous one, we want Wheat Ridge to continue to feel like Wheat Ridge. We, I think everyone here likes the city as it is. So we want it to still feel like Wheat Ridge, and we're also ready to tackle some of the challenges that the city faces. So those, those can be summarized in three goals. So to become the best version of ourself, Wheat Ridge wants modern infrastructure, thoughtful place-making, and thriving businesses and neighborhoods. How does the plan get us there? Well, as a start, it establishes our core values, our planning principles, and our planning priorities. So our core values are our shared beliefs, that they articulate who we are as a community. They are independent-minded, inclusive, and forward-looking. Our planning principles are criteria to evaluate decisions and ensure that those decisions reinforce our values. So they articulate what we care about most. They are to serve a mix of incomes, to preserve our patchwork quilt, to focus on sustainability, and to strengthen the city's fiscal position. So then we have our planning priorities. These are the big moves that we need to get right before the community can really become the best version of itself. They are an improved retail and business environment, Thirty-Eighth Avenue as the city's kind of main street, a network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities across the city, and proactive infrastructure management. Okay, so then we get to part two. That's called our character and development vision. And the plan explains how the community would like to shape and reinforce the city's character in the future. To do this, it first articulates what are we trying to achieve here? So the desired outcomes that are detailed in the plan are allowing us to evolve while continuing to feel like Wheat Ridge, peaceful coexistence between new development and existing neighborhoods, improved connectivity and access, and generally just making places that are great or continuing to protect the places that are great. So there are several ways that a city can work towards these outcomes. Based on the conversations we had in our engagement phases, including here, the plan focuses on tools that city staff can hone and develop. The plan organizes these tools in four categories. So we have, we talk about what uses are appropriate, form tools that dictate the size, shape, and placement of what we build. The going places tools impact how we get around, and then the staying places tools that make places somewhere you want to stop and spend time. And so Wheat Ridge already uses a lot of these tools as planning commission. You guys talk about these often, so you know that these are already in play. So the city plan's really an opportunity to hone and refine them where needed. And the plan also kind of illustrates how these tools might be, might look if they're implemented in different locations around Wheat Ridge. So those are the illustrations seen here, and that was a focus area conversation we had in one of our earlier meetings. So other than those illustrations, how do we apply these tools in Wheat Ridge? So the plan explains, this is a, this is, if you really get into the weeds of chapter three, this is what we're doing. The plan explains how we apply tools based on context. So in the case of the city plan, context means our place types and our street types. Part two details how those use, form, going places, and staying places tools would be applied in different contexts. We're going to talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. Okay, but first, part three, called creating our future, brings us back to those three goals that we, that I mentioned at the beginning to help us become the best version of ourselves. Modern infrastructure, thoughtful place-making, and thriving businesses and neighborhoods. So based on everything I've just mentioned, our values, priorities, and principles from part one, and our character and development vision from part two, these three goals organize the strategies and actions needed to bring the plan to life. We'll get into some of those a bit more tonight as well. Okay, so that all gives us direction for planning what we know and for getting the big things right. But what about planning for the unknown? So this is where we will turn back to our values and principles. They informed all of the content in this plan, but they will also provide our decision-making framework for the future. So over the fifteen-year horizon of this plan, things will happen that we can't anticipate now. COVID is a great example of this. I guarantee that no comprehensive plan adopted in 2015 anticipated a pandemic coming. I think we can all agree that we hope we don't have anything like that in our near future. But I'm sure there will be some things that we just cannot anticipate now, big surprises. So when those do come up, our core values and our planning principles can provide a way to evaluate any unexpected condition, whatever it is, against the known values and principles of the community. So the plan includes the worksheet shown here that helps us evaluate future decisions. And that worksheet includes several questions to get at how decisions do or don't align with these articulated values and principles. So at the top, you can see it says the decision we're trying to make. So we're trying to make it really general, but that's the kind of thing that a staff member could come and bring to this, you know, if, if we're trying to grapple with whether or not something is aligned with our core values and principles. You, you might actually see this worksheet in action. We'll see, we'll see if it, it sticks. So not every decision will meet every core value and every principle. Some may support more than others. But overall, we want to make sure that our collective kind of cumulative choices that we make as a city keep us moving in a direction that supports those general values and principles. Okay, I am about to do a deeper dive into implementing this plan for this group. I will have kind of formalized discussions for us to stop. Before I launch into that, though, I just wanted to pause and see if anyone has any questions or like issues around clarity for what we've gone through so far. All right, let's get into implementing the plan. Let's see. So under, under the goal of thoughtful place-making, we have a strategy, implement our character and development vision. So based on that, we want to talk to you tonight about how the city plan will inform rezonings and code amendments, and we'll stop to talk about each of those. So first, we're going to go through, to talk about city plan and rezonings. That's going to be something that you guys see as a group here often. So to do this, we're going to step through an example. And given the agenda tonight, what better example than what we just talked about? So we are going to just walk through in a little more detail from, from the perspective of the city plan, how, how we would expect to evaluate rezonings based on what's in the plan. So on the right, you can see a checklist. That checklist is literally from the plan. So that is in the plan itself, and that reminds us what content from the plan is relevant to a zoning. So first, we're going to look at core values. This zoning and the proposal that it enables is aligned with our inclusive core value, to be welcoming to everyone and a good home for all kinds of people. So then we have our planning principles. This zoning is consistent with the planning principle to serve a mix of incomes, ensuring that investment in the city is for folks with a range of incomes. Then what are we trying to achieve? So this is consistent with our desired outcome of an evolution of places, exactly what you all were discussing earlier tonight. It also balances peaceful coexistence by aligning with the application of appropriate tools for this kind of setting, as I'll go into a little more in a moment. Moving down our checklist, then we have our place-type map. So this designates the property in question in two categories. It's moderate, moderate variety neighborhood and community mixed use. So as I mentioned earlier, that's one piece of how this plan defines context. Another way is, is the street types. So the subject property is adjacent to what's called a community corridor. So then our checklist on the right also asks us to determine if any special cases are relevant. So these are included in the plan to address a handful of special cases that just require a little more nuance than the place-type and street-type frameworks can provide on their own. The site does qualify under what we're calling special case number one or large site civic, institutional, and/or agricultural reuse. The intent of these cases is to allow investment in these large embedded sites in a way that achieves the desired outcomes of an evolution of place and peaceful coexistence. So based on the place-type, the adjacent street-type, and this special case, the plan tells us what application of tools is appropriate for this case. So for uses, a wide variety of residential uses would be appropriate, including multi-unit adjacent to the community corridor, which is Forty-Fourth Avenue. We'll also want to look at the appropriate application of form tools for this context and whether the proposed zone change in site design are consistent with what the plan says. So in this case, the build-two and setbacks match those surrounding the site, and they are also increased where adjacent to the low-density residential to the north. Bulk plane and form requirements avoid imposition of additional height on adjacent properties. Then you have appropriate screening and buffering that are included. And as you guys discussed tonight, the parking needs are addressed. So finally, the last item on our checklist is to evaluate any relevant goals, strategies, and actions from our implementation chapter. So in this case, we want to look at our strategy to support housing development to meet community goals. That strategy includes an action to, that talks about revising regulations that are barriers to creating housing in the vicinity of commercial areas. And it specifically lists Forty-Fourth as one of those areas. So this summarizes kind of what you would expect to discuss from a zoning, and you even got a preview from that from Stephanie tonight. So based on that kind of whirlwind overview, would love to hear from you all what we're especially curious about, I mean, any reactions, of course, but also what's working well? Are there missed opportunities? And does anything need adjustment?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just share a couple of thoughts. I really appreciate your presentation. It's super exciting. I mean, I think, you know, without really, I mean, that example and kind of, you know, one reaction to the plan is, and I think that maybe this is probably unavoidable to some extent, but it, it seems kind of inherently permissive a little bit. Like, it just kind of has the feel, you know, to some extent where you could take a, a example of a situation and essentially find ways that it would, you know, be in accordance with the plan, I think. And, and by that, I mean that I think that there's, you know, some sense of kind of broad language that, that, that is kind of a wide net. And I think that's probably a result of the community engagement process. And, you know, I think it's also an element of interpretation. I know that there's some subjectivity to some of this work when you're thinking of long-range planning and, you know, higher-level stuff. I mean, all that being said, I do think the plan itself has a lot of specificity and is really geared more so than I anticipated, like on the concrete, like decision-making process in terms of, you know, being designed in a way that really is intended to be a practical tool rather than just a, you know, a, a plan for the sake of, because you have to do a plan. And it seems like it's intended really to be put into practice. So I know I'm kind of just thinking out loud a little bit. But, you know, kind of the example made me think like, you know, I mean, it, it seems like you could, probably a lot of things would meet the criteria if you wanted it to. And so I don't know if that'll be a concern from the community, you know, or if that feel is shared, you know, through the process or something.
That is a very good point and good question. And we had a lot of conversations in Planning Division of like, okay, but how are people going to And we had a lot of conversations in planning division of like, okay, but how are people going to try and misuse this? How are they going, how are they going to use it against us? It's what you're seeing and I, you know, I hope we're close, but I, I'm, you know, one of the reasons we want to come to you is if we need to tweak it, we'd love to get your input on that. What we're trying to do is thread the needle to allow the right level. We don't want to be too prescriptive and paint ourselves into a corner where you're like, you shall do this setback and you must. I mean, you can't say that in a plan anyway, but we didn't, we wanted to kind of set the right tools out there, but not require them so that, you know, it's, you just never know with one specific site, that might not actually be the right solution anymore. And so what we did want to do is we made sure to pull in the intent statement level so that we can, if we feel like, it's kind of a good faith test, like the gut check of like, okay, you're saying you, you know, okay, buffers may be appropriate and we have someone saying like, nah, we don't need buffers. That's where we can look back to the intent and those desired outcomes and say, okay, but is this achieving peaceful coexistence? Because if it's not, then your interpretation, person who's trying to find the loophole is not adequate for, for what tools are appropriate to apply here. So we wanted to leave that wiggle room to apply sophisticated discretion on a site-by-site basis. But also, yes, we definitely don't want people to weasel out of, out of things. So we're hoping that the combination of, of the kind of the tools, the recommended tool uses being softer, but then those intense statements being like, this is what you have to. And I think that's what, you know, people can show up and say, this, this doesn't achieve peaceful coexistence. And so we might not have thought of every exact interpretation of the tool that people need. But I think that's where we can have those, that higher level, those desired outcomes keep us honest in the process is the hope.
Yeah, I just real quick response. I mean, I also think, and I appreciate that. I also think there is some challenges inherently with, there are some of the, and I, you know, I still have to try and make an effort to kind of not to confuse the different language, you know, what are the values, what are the principles, you know, because it's kind of similar. But there are some that are not contradictory, but you have like preserve character, but also be forward looking, you know? You have some of these kind of want your cake and eat it too, which I think is just a reflection of where we're at. There's just a lot of change and there's also a lot of just affinity and kind of affection for the traditional piece of the community. So obviously it's just a hard place to be. But so I think that's also maybe some of the tension. But again, I, I, I think that it's really good and I, you know, I found myself getting way deep, too deep in the weeds, just like reading through it. But, but yeah, I mean, that's, I guess that's just some thoughts I had on me.
Well, and I, I also do want to say, again, we, we had a lot of conversations to try to get it right, but I very much welcome. Hey, on page 96, you say this here, and I actually don't think that's right here. Like we're, this, you guys have, most of my audiences kind of skip over part two. And because it gets really deep in the weeds really fast, but this, for better or for worse, that, that's kind of your, what, you know, the, the subject matter that you guys work with. So that is the section where literally every word can matter. And, and so I, I do truly welcome either tonight or in follow-up. You know, you can send me a page number and a word and I will, I will, I, I have thought through every word thoroughly and I am happy to continue to do so because I really do want to make sure we get it right.
Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I do think that it includes a great deal of specificity. But it starts, I love the way it starts with, with the core values and principles and builds from that. Because I think it does serve to have a foundation for what you fall back on. Because everything emanates from there. You know, a lot of times it's, it seems like in a comprehensive plan, there's, you know, mission, vision and mission. And then you go to the goals and there you are. And, and there are goals in here and there are implementations in here. But the, there's, there's a lot of time spent building the case for those. And, and I really did appreciate that. And when you use the, I hope I get it right because you just said it and I did read it, but peaceful coexistence. You know, it, that's sort of like another way of saying compatibility. But using that word compatibility to me is nebulous. And, you know, I've often heard it said, well, what does that really mean? You know, and, and how do you define it? And, and I think the way this is done provides more tools for measuring or saying or defending perhaps even what compatibility is. I, I think it's kind of a unique plan in the way that it's put together. And I, I appreciate the way it's done. And to your point, I think that it fits well for a place that is in change. And I, and I think that we are. So anyway. But I, maybe I'll have a few specific comments to get before, get, to get to you before July 22nd. But I think overall it's, it's great.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wood?
I'll just make one specific comment on what's working well. What's really helpful for me is that visual of, I don't know what page it is, but you showed it this evening with the different colors and you have like the round areas that are more development. I could pull it up on my screen, but I can send you a note. I just wanted to acknowledge that I think that visual, to be able to see the entire city and where we're focusing. Because right in the example, you just walked through like 38th Street and 44th, like those areas that you call out. And the plan also is like opportunity areas, I think are, are really helpful. Because it's hard as a commissioner who lives on one side of the city to really understand what's going on and some of those areas that I don't spend a lot of time in. So I really like that visual.
Great, thank you. Is that the place type map maybe?
I think so, yes.
Okay, I can go. Well, I don't trust myself with this clicker. Maybe not, maybe not.
It looks like a dinosaur.
But yes, that, that map we, we poured over as a, as the planning division and we went, we like block by block to just really think about it. And again, okay, who's going to try and what's the, what's the, what's the angle here? Like, how do we, so that, I definitely learned a lot about Wheat Ridge from that exercise and leaning on our, our planners who do know every square inch of Wheat Ridge to get that, to get that mapped. Thank you.
Thanks for all of the hard work on that. This is probably a giant animal to, to tackle. And I think you, you guys have done a great job on this. I, I do want to know, and Jenna, if this is something offline to talk about, kick me. But in this example, in the case that we just heard, this land that is being developed is surrounded by like eight people. So how do we, as a community, give them a, a, a good voice? And I mean, I know we've done our community engagement and things that we have done prior to getting here tonight on, on the ODP. But my mom, I feel for some of these folks because that's where I come from. R1 lot in, or not R1, but A1 lot in, in Lakewood. Thank God, sort of. Mom has the towers with the high voltage lines that my company has that pretty much bisected the neighborhood. So makes it very undesirable for, for development. But how do those folks have their voice carried? And I realize, you know, it's a democracy, the majority rules, yada, yada. But you know what I'm saying is, is, you know, we got, that's going to affect those folks for a long, long time. And their kids and so on and so forth. So how, how does the plan take that into consideration?
I, I think that's a huge driver of how we arrived at the peaceful coexistence concept. And, and what, the way we tried to kind of pick that apart is, and I think about it from my kind of mediation background of separating the issues from the positions, where it's like, okay, the position is like, no, I don't want this. But let's step back from that and talk about what are the exact issues? Is it noise? Is it lighting? Is it parking? Is it traffic? And so we had, one of our engagement phases was to ask people exactly that. Let, let's say there's a, you know, new development going in near you. What would you be most worried about? What, what would you like for the city to regulate? So that's the framing that we asked folks to get that list of tools. So then I think when you come to kind of the, to the individual, you know, and we, so we talked about the, the, how those tools should look based on what we heard and in those different contexts. But again, we're not going to get everything and we're not going to speak to each person's particular concerns for each site. So one of the things that we'll talk about in a minute is that we've, we've recognized that there's some instances where we may want to be able to ask to know more sooner. So we might say, hey, in order to do a zoning, we need to know a little more about what you're doing. In that case, then we could have people come and, you know, join, you speak at the mic and say, I'm worried about lighting spillover. I'm worried about, you know, the clubhouse having parties till midnight. And so that, that could, on an individual basis, become part of the conversation. Where we might say, hey, to achieve peaceful coexistence here, you need to make sure that your lighting doesn't point outwards or it turns off by, by dusk. Or you need to make sure that your clubhouse has a, like sound, you know, sound regulations by 10:00 PM. So I think that we're hoping that that, again, coming back to the, the role of that intent statement and the acknowledgement that we may need to be able to dig into the details sooner. In some cases, I'm hoping that we can address those pieces so that we know what do those eight people care about? You know, they, someone might be not care at all about sound because they're night owl. You know, there are certain things. So I think there we want to, we, by leaving it a little open-ended, but having the intent, we leave, we don't add a bunch of extra regulations that might not be needed, but we still are providing those hooks so that we can have those conversations, including with the public.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts at this point? All right. Well, I'll get back to my nemesis, the clicker here. Okay, so now we want to talk a little bit about implementing the city plan and code amendments. So under our strategy that I mentioned early, earlier of implementing the character and development vision, we have an action D1 shown here, which specifies that we need to update our regulations in order to bring this plan to life. So the action listed here compiles a list of all the different topics throughout the plan that are mentioned that may require code updates. So that includes looking at our uses and form requirements to make sure that our zoning code is set up so that they can be appropriately applied by context. Again, we already regulate a lot of those things. We just know that some of those outcomes aren't quite achieving what the community wants. So that's a place where we want to look and see how, how are, what, what are our uses and what are our form, form guidance happening here. We also want to talk about figuring out appropriate lower cost ways for businesses to grow, including removing barriers to flexible or even in some cases temporary uses. So we want to be able to talk about what is appropriate and are our current regulations achieving what we want them to achieve, given our bearing, our different goals. We'll also look at whether there are proactive updates that we can make to regulations to enable housing near commercial as well as housing diversity and affordability. That list will also include things like parking requirements, when sidewalks are, are to, when we require sidewalks to be constructed. And as I mentioned earlier, situations when we want to be able to require additional review earlier. So we'd love to do this all very soon. But we also have to be realistic about how much time and resources this kind of update requires. So first, we want to focus on the quick wins. So these would be updates that we can make to the code in the near term that don't require a ton of analysis and like changing every page in the code. Then in the longer term, we'll plan to conduct a full audit and then alignment of the code with the plan. So this would likely include the first step of kind of refining our existing regulations. So looking at the zone districts that we have and saying, okay, let's like make these tweaks here and there. Then we might need to create new ones if we're finding that some of the outcomes we want just aren't in the menu that we have. And then once we've kind of updated the ones we have and created the new ones we need, we would look at our zoning map to see, are there any proactive updates that we need to make to, to just remove some barriers to, to achieving the outcomes we're looking for? So that's a shorter topic, but similar questions. Based on that list, there are more in the plan and we can dive into that. But anything, any reactions, what's working well, missed opportunities and things that you feel need adjustment?
Yeah, it was kind of interesting. I mean, I will say, you know, I don't have much experience with, with this kind of effort. City plan, you know, comprehensive plans and this sort of thing. I'm not really like relatively new to this space in terms of this work. And so I was kind of curious like how far it went on explicit like recommendations. And, you know, there's not a ton, but then there's some that jump out. Like there's one about, you know, the fee and lieu, where, you know, you're reading through and you're like, oh, that's like pretty straightforward. Like the city should take a look at how that is being used by the developer in certain situations and this sort of thing. And, you know, I don't know if I have a lot of opinions about it, but I guess there were fewer of those kinds of recommendations than maybe I was thinking. I don't know if that's a bad thing necessarily. I mean, the other thing that I thought was interesting was the, like stormwater. I think it was talking about kind of exploring, creating almost like a district or, you know, like an entity that doesn't exist that would fund updates to stormwater systems that aren't in play right now. And so, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think, you know, you do wonder a little bit about how much of this is like pie in the sky and how much of this is going to, that we will see in the relatively near future. Like the plan will force revisions to the code and to things like that. And I guess I'm just wondering, in your opinion, is this on par with, you know, will, will we, will we see a lot of change in the three to five year timeframe as a result of the plan? Or is it more about as new developments come, it's referencing this plan instead of the old one? And obviously that's the application. Or is it going to be a lot of like, the plan says we need to relook at this component of how things are done. And so we need to do that next year kind of thing.
Well, so a couple reactions to that. And I also want to have Eric from CZB chime in. Because one of the, one of the things that we went into this plan really wanting, and one of the reasons we selected CZB is that we didn't want a long pie in the sky laundry list. That is what a lot of comprehensive plans are. And that's just wasn't what we as a city thought was going to be useful to us. We wanted much more of a, like a roadmap. So I, I, we've really tried to not have pie in the sky things in here, but it is a 15-year plan. So I think it's important to remember that timeframe. A lot of, we have, we have, at the end of chapter five, the implementation chapter, we do have some timelines. And a lot starts in the three to five years. But you'll also notice that what's starting is a lot of like setting the groundwork. So it's establishing a, an ongoing CIP funding stream. You're not going to see anything on the ground. That's a huge change and one that we need, but that's not going to result in like things that you see. There, there are a lot of kind of chip away at it things with the mobility network. So you'll, but again, that's, it's, each of those projects is huge lift and very expensive. So you're not going to see big changes right away. I think one, one challenge, thinking about setting up our implementation program and continuing our community engagement through that is we're going to have a lot of work with storytelling to say like, hey, you haven't seen anything happen on your street yet, but here's why. Here's what the city is doing. We're laying all this groundwork. So I think that you can expect a lot of this stuff to happen. There's nothing where I'm like, yeah, that's just fun vision because it's a nice thought. You know, we really tried to cut that part out and just have it be actionable and realistic for Wheat Ridge. But there are, like I, I mentioned the, a lot of mobility stuff and the CIP fund. If we can't get, if we can't, we need to get that funding to see the stuff in the plan happen. So there are some front-end hard conversations that we need to have. We'll probably need to figure out how to, we only need to like budget enough to hire a consultant to do a full audit of our zoning code and help us make those updates. You know, that's not something that Stephanie can chip away on between rezoning cases. Like that's a really heavy lift. And so we are going to need to continue to And so we are going to need to continue to have hard conversations to move that forward. But I, I, we, we really tried to right-size this to, to, to getting the right list of stuff that is feasible. It's not, it's not way out there. Eric, do you have anything to add? And I'm going to go tell the computer not to re-
I, just that I would, yeah, I would add, the way you phrase your question, Dan, you listed kind of a bunch of stuff at the end of your question. And I would say it's in all of the above, which is to say, there are a number of fantastic ideas that are in some state of development or implementation that the city plan didn't invent, didn't come up with. But we wanted to get in there to give it that sort of policy backup and that reinforcement. So the stormwater utility is one of those. There are a number of things that maybe weren't under discussion until we started talking about them in this process. And so those become the new things to say, as Ella outlined, we should, we really need to work on these. They're really important. They will take a long time, but they're something that we, the city will proactively pursue. A lot of that's true on the Capitol side and elsewhere. And then, yes, you're right, there will be a number of things where the plan is now sort of like lying in wait, if you will. So there will be things that will come up and we know they will be tricky. So one example is like the example that you've been talking about tonight, the Blue Columbine project. There, that is not the only kind of sort of infill type site that will have redevelopment pressure on it in the future. There will be numerous ones. If you read that part of the plan, I think we talk about schools. And I think that's obvious to everyone, two closed elementary schools, those are candidates, obviously trying to get ahead of that. Churches, other kind of large sites like that, other agricultural parcels. So there are other things that maybe no one's thinking about them. But we, putting our planner hats on and looking into the future, we can feel confident that they could be issues. And so this plan is prepared to speak to that if and when it happens. But against Ella's point, you know, maybe it's not this week, maybe it's not next year. But at some point in the 15-year horizon of this plan, it becomes relevant. And hopefully we've set the plan up in a way that when it comes time to go back and, and look at that. And, and Commissioner Wood's point as well, the values and principles set you up to make, you know, make those decisions and evaluate those, those things. That it becomes usable. And I think a lot of the review, it's, last thing I'll say here. I acknowledge, I think Ella would acknowledge as well, it is a hard ask to put this in front of you or anybody, anybody in the public and say, what do you think? Because so much of it really is about things that haven't happened yet, things you haven't really spent a lot of time thinking about. So the nature of this plan is to be usable at various points for, to do different jobs that it needs to do over 15 years. So you can be forgiven for looking at it saying, well, jeez, I'm not exactly sure. That's totally understandable. But just so you know that the way it's constructed, the, what the jobs that it is set up to do, that's what's in our minds as, as we craft it. Thanks.
The other thing to remember is all the different plans that have been going on at the same time, which most cities won't do. And so we've learned a lot when we've been doing the Stormwater Master Plan, for example, as to what are we going to be planning for? And the comprehensive plan or the city plan needs to support that. You don't want conflicting plans and that's the, the joy of being able to do all the plans at the same time. But also the, the, the extreme heavy lift to getting them all to say, to support each other. So that was also probably some of what happened with that, some of, some of the recommendations being more specific than others.
And I think you also, you did identify that there are some points where you're like, oh, that's, that's a different level of detail than what's around it. And I think we normally comprehensive plans do fly, fly pretty high. Like they, I think that's more the aberration than the absence in other places. We did decide to give ourselves permission to do that for, for certain topics that have been known issues that we know there's this ground swell of like, please do this. And in the case of like the fee and lieu for sidewalks, the, the complete mobility network and infrastructure, that's two of our four priorities. So for that one, we were like, let's just get that in here to help us be able to move this along faster and not go then start a conversation of, so do we want to talk about the fee and lieu thing? You know, it's like, no, we've, we've had those conversations, so let's memorialize that. So we can just jumpstart that conversation, given its role in the bigger picture here. So it, you have, you have, with eagle eyes, noticed some, some strange, different levels of detail. But that, that is where they're coming from. Any other thoughts at this point? We are close, I promise. So we can now, maybe? Okay, so the next time we see you will be for plan adoption. So I, I, my previous two pauses for discussion were pretty focused to what we had just been talking about. But are there any other reactions to anything else in the plan that you would love a chance to talk about and have thought about and addressed before we're back here to adopt it? And Eric had a really great point that I think you might have some good comments after a couple of rezonings. He might be, oh, actually, I think this should be. But at this point, anything else that, that you didn't get a chance to share that you want to air tonight?
We'll go to Commissioner Wood because Commissioner Gravy's been bogarting.
Well, well, Commissioner Gravy has really good questions and comments, so this is good. So, so ultimately it just hit me and it's more a question than anything. So like on staying places, you know, there's a handful that are noted and I wouldn't argue with any of them that are noted as places to focus on. But it occurred to me that there are some others that, that are not focused on, like Gold's grocery and that development. And the reason that stands out to me is because there's always so much activity there. And I thought, well, maybe that's why we didn't focus on that one because that's already going great. And there's a lot of activity there. But it also kind of occurred to me that in, in order to ensure that that continues, that's something to think about. And there might be some others, like, you know, I was just thinking again about some of the places that are important to me in Wheat Ridge that weren't mentioned, like Crown Hill, for instance. And again, I'm sure this was carefully thought out, so this is not really even a, I don't bring this up to say, I think you ought to put these in there. It's more sort of a question of where there are, those place, two places in particular, or maybe Gold's specifically. Why that wasn't included and if there are others that you thought about?
So Gold's actually, it did sneak on there.
Oh, it did and I missed it.
It's harder to see because there are two similarly colored district corridors crossing there. But we do have Gold's on there. Crown Hill is tough because it's not actually in Wheat Ridge, but what is it?
Jefferson County.
Jefferson County. So that, that was always, we always were trying to grapple with how to deal with that. Like when our first phase, we asked people like, what do you love about Wheat Ridge? And so many people said Crown Hill. So then we were reporting out, we were like, okay, well, it's clearly really important, but it's not something we have any jurisdiction over. But you can see that we, one of the things we did is we look at the connections to and through Crown Hill. That's a really big piece. I think largely people don't want it to change. Like I, I, not that we could do anything about it, but none of the comments were, I really want to see X, Y, Z at Crown Hill. It was all just like, this is such a great asset. So one of the things the plan does is making sure that people keep, that it's easy to get there. I think we might've identified some crossings needed there. And I know that the area on 32nd outside the high school was a kind of a, a known issue for where we need to help people slow down.
Oh, well, you know, I think that, that photo radar sign is working well, actually.
Yes, it is, it is, by the numbers as well. So yeah, and I think it is also important to note that the, the gathering locations are identified as places that we know we want to build the mobility network out around them. And if we're coming to, if push comes to shove and we're having right of way or budget issues, we want to really think about those staying places tools there. But they're not by any means the only important places in our community. You know, I think coming back to those, the four outcomes of the making great places, that is not limited to the staying places. Those are everywhere.
I appreciate that. That's exactly, that's exactly what I wanted to know.
Good.
Mr. Goody? I just had a quick, just a couple of quick general thoughts and not, not to necessarily stir discussion, but just kind of observations. You know, on the mobility side, I, I, you know, I, I appreciate the emphasis on, you know, multimodal bike and ped. You know, I, to some extent, I think some people might feel it's, it's overemphasized a little bit because, you know, the kind of existing ways that people get around. And that's not my perspective, but I can kind of see that being a reaction. I, I will say in terms of like the, I forget exactly how they're phrased, but the like, you know, they're like the dotted line bike options. There seems to be a little lack of a north-south identified, you know, bike points in the southwest portion of the city. There's like a pretty big, if you look at that mobility map, there's like a pretty big gap, you know, between Parfet and something to the heat balls number or something, you know, like a pretty big. And I was just kind of wondering if you are someone by bike and you want this to guide options to navigate different parts of the city? It just seemed a little bit, you know, and I think that part of the city is maybe didn't get as much attention in general. And then I will say specific to my neighborhood, I brought this up before, but at that, on that same point, you know, there's like a stretch of like, this is a recommended bike. I mean, like Pierce is a main bike artery, you know, arterial that I like totally acknowledge because it goes the entire north, north-south length of the, the city. But the connectors, and I think this is acknowledged in the plan, but the connectors are a little short. And like, you know, my route specifically that I experienced, you know, Harland goes up until 38th. But then there's another one on 41st that goes west, but there's no way to get to it in an identifiable, like safe manner. Because between 38th and 44th is no, 41st is no longer a identified bike access point. And I think that's just the nature of the width of the street and maybe private property and this kind of thing. But there was a few of those where they're like, there's a, they're not quite as connected as, and you know, I say that because it's a forward-thinking thing rather than just identifying what it is. You know, and there's some element of maybe like, maybe we can be creative and find ways to like connect these dots, like literally.
Yeah.
And then the other thought that I had just a little bit is, you know, in this day and age, it's no, you know, I mean, it's obviously well-acknowledged that we are, you know, exist in a rapidly changing climate. I think a lot of the way that this plan is designed and being responsive to considering the future, you know, there's not as so much explicit mention and focus on like resilience. And, you know, I mean, there is like the stormwater funding piece, but you know, fire isn't really mentioned in this plan at all in terms of prevention, like what the city is or should be doing to suppress, you know, the potential for that. There's not much about, you know, I mean, we, we talked about a little, little of this offline, but in terms of like water supply and quality challenges that are, you know, going to be present in our future and probably the lifespan of this plan. There's only so much we can do and I mean, I'm not going to ramble forever on this stuff. But when you do a Ctrl F on it, you know, there's not as much mention of some of this. And again, that's because this is high level and it's not intended to, I don't know, I'm not saying there's an appropriate place. But I just feel like in this day and age, it's a really important lens to ensure that your long-term planning is acknowledging some parts of the future that are inherently different from our past in terms of risk and how we're preparing for that. You know, hundred-year floods. I mean, literally last night, it probably rained like two inches in a half hour at my house. And, you know, and so like these things are going to be more frequent. And I just hope that there's been a concerted effort to acknowledge that changing reality. And I think there is, just because the plan is forward-thinking and modern and, you know, adaptable in terms of how we're kind of addressing future build and stuff like that. But that was just another kind of general thought I had. And then I'll, you know, by the 22nd, I'll shoot you some more nitpicky stuff. But, but I think it's really good and it's really exciting, so.
Just to address the wildfire, that's, that's a really good point. And it's, I've worked typically in cities that are full-service cities, so we have our own fire, we have our own water and sewer. And, but I will tell you that we've been working alongside Jefferson County with their wildfire mitigation plan. I might've said that wrong, but you get the point. And our two fire districts that serve us, and they've been very much in tune with that too. So I just wanted to address that point because I know we're definitely working on that. And then with the, the water districts, I know that we have some expectation to probably have further conversations with them and Denver Water about, because we don't have any control over our water necessarily, but we can still have some input. So I appreciate those comments.
Yeah, thanks. And I think, and on the water side specifically, I mean, I think there was like some information, like in an appendix or something that's
Yes.
Specific to, you know, both like requirements and state statute, but also the work that the city has done in terms of conservation measures. And I think it's a good opportunity to highlight those and think about what is next in that same space.
I sent, I sent Dan deep into appendix world. But I, I think, I think that's a good, you know, we, we have the core value of forward-looking and the principle of focus on sustainability. So I think we, we have the basis to think about that. And I think that if, I think we could definitely look into adding that. You know, I, I've had, as Jana mentioned, with all the plans going on, I have had the benefit since we just, we had our sustainability action plan adopted. Where I've been like, great, they're worrying about that. But I think also, you know, as I do, there, there are sections where I, you know, we pull in and reference specific content from the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, the pathway, because it's relevant to like the bigger picture and our priorities. So I think there's definitely room to do that and kind of highlight the conversations that are, and direct folks over to that sustainability action plan to say, hey, we realize, you know, these, we recognize that these important topics are in line with our values and principles and check out, you know, these strategies from that plan. So I think, I think we definitely, that's like an easy, easy tweaking fix to make that more complete.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I think there, there is inherently a little tunnel vision we have in this seat because, you know, we're not obligated to review all those other plans like we are this one. And so we don't have the same perspective that you all do in terms of all this other great work that's being done that is maybe not as apparent in what we're talking about here.
Well, and I think a lot of, you know, our, like a rezoning requires consistency with the comp plan. It doesn't with the sustainability action plan. So it's important for this document itself to make those connections. All right, well, I will wrap up with our next steps. So we are in our current, we're in the public review. And as I mentioned, we, it's got this meeting and other study session. We're open on, with our online commentary through the 22nd. We also talked last week to the Wheat Ridge Idea Committee, the Inclusivity, Diversity, Equity and Accessibility Committee. Got some good feedback from them. So after we get input from all of these sources, we will update the plan with these great suggestions that you all are having to reflect that input. And then again, we're so far, so good, barring any surprises at council or with, you know, any comments that we get before the 22nd. We're anticipating that we would be back for adoption with this group in later in August and then to city council in early September. And then we are ready to start our implementation program. And I, I do expect that that will start to really happen, partially because I've been putting all of my time into the city plan. So I will need something to, to keep working on. But I'm, I'm hope, I'm hopeful that we'll be back to this group with some of those early quick wins before too long. So with that, thank you very much for your thoughts and your time on this and we'll see you in August.
Thanks again for all the hard work. Madam, upcoming dates?
Yes, we do not expect to have a meeting on August 7th, but we may have a meeting. In fact, we're planning on having a meeting on August 21st. So mark it on your calendars. And then we will probably have at least one meeting in September, possibly two. We're starting to kind of get, all of our projects are coming to a head here as things happen, you know. And then speaking of projects, I'll give you a couple of development updates. Some of the projects that will be starting construction soon, maybe not this week, but in the near future. Bon, at Clerk Creek Crossing, we have Bonfire Burritos, the Home Two Hotel, and then the Crossing Drive section. Drive section, which is the Paseo. And in addition to that, we've got some townhomes at 3915 Uppam, and also a Seven Brew Coffee on Wadsworth in front of the pickleball. So, those are my updates for you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner updates? Commissioner Woods?
I really have no updates, other than it's great to be here. This is my third meeting. I'm learning as I go. Thanks for your patience, everybody.
Mr. Quinones?
Nothing for me?
Commissioner Gravy, quick updates?
I think I've used all of my good, my, my, my social capital tonight. No updates.
Mr. Halden?
No updates.
Mr. Moore?
No updates, although I did want to thank the city for updating the, the walk just outside the building. It has made my morning walks to drop my son off at daycare that much more smooth. I've been cutting through the parking lot for the last couple of weeks and saying hi to everybody, but it's a nice, smooth ride now.
And you don't have to get your feet wet doing it.
Mr. Disney?
I just want to acknowledge the planning staff and the city council and everybody that went through the recent round of, I guess, pushback from the community on the implementation or adoption of the zoning at Lutheran. A lot of very unfair things were said, because my experience in being on the Planning Commission and a volunteer for the city for the last 13 or 14 years is, I don't think people really appreciate how competent the staff is. So, there you go. And I'm going to cry.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Disney. I, I echo that. You, you all do a wonderful job, but they all ran away. Look away for a second.
I'll pass that along.
I just want to give everyone that had anything to do with Ridge Fest, super, super gold star, kudos and everything. Again, Commissioner Gravy ran a great ship on the cornhole. It was, it was a great time, and super thank you to Paige for what she does at Local Works. There are no other commissioner reports. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
There we go. Second?
Second.
Oh, all in favor? We'll see you next time.
Yep.